Hillsborough County has launched its redesigned website, hcfl.gov. The new domain boasts a variety of improvements to searchability, page layout, navigation, and website speed. The revamped website features robust search functions making it easier for users to find the information they need, whether searching for essential government services, paying water bills, accessing event information, learning how to acquire a new trash- Hillsborough County has launched its redesigned website, hcfl.gov. The new domain boasts a variety of improvements to searchability, page layout, navigation, and website speed. The revamped website features robust search functions making it easier for users to find the information they need, whether searching for essential government services, paying water bills, accessing event information, learning how to acquire a new trash can, or identifying evacuation zones, the enhanced search functionality ensures quick access to relevant content. Hcfl.gov's new design features a clean, modern, and intuitive layout. The streamlined design enhances user-friendliness for easy navigation and access to important resources. Navigating the website is now more straightforward than ever. Users can seamlessly move between different sections, departments, and services while interacting with information and resources. Ready to see what all the fuss is about? Head to hcfl.gov and discover your best source for all things Hillsborough County.
Tampa Bay is like no place else.
Wait, you can't recycle the bag. You have to throw it away.
Proper recycling keeps it that way for everyone. Bags tangle in machinery and can bring sorting efforts to a halt.
No bags!
Trash the bags and keep our recycling program moving forward.
No, Mommy, no plastic bags.
Do your part to keep our recycling bag-free. Trash the tanglers or return them to participating retailers. For more information, visit tampa bay recycles.org.
Psst, hey, would you do me a favor? Grab your phone or smart device and open up that camera. Then point it right here at the QR code. Do you have it? Oh, wait a second. When you see the link pop up on your screen, give it a tap. You ready? Boom! Welcome to the Hillsborough County official YouTube channel. We've got all sorts of videos here, all about what makes our community such an awesome place. From local events and community highlights, to what's in the perfect Cuban sandwich. We've got it all. We're always adding new things, so while you're here, be sure to subscribe and hit that notification bell so you'll never miss a new video. Here's that QR code again, just in case you missed it. Go ahead and check it out. This must have fallen out of that video. This really is the perfect Cuban sandwich.
Oh, man, here comes Arnie again.
Check this out. It's Arnie. What are you doing? You made a mess in my hallway.
Hey, Arnie, looks like you could use a hand. Let me help you.
You don't need superpowers to be a hero. Help make Hillsborough bully-free.
Good morning and welcome to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Quarterly Awards and Recognition Ceremony. We're going to have an invocation and pledge given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sepeda. Commissioner?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we begin this day thanking you for who you are and your great love that you have for all of us. And today we pray a special prayer for all those that will be receiving awards and recognition today. We thank you for their lives and the special gifts and talents that you've given each one of them to be a great blessing to our community, to Hillsborough County, and beyond. And we ask you to bless them greatly and their families and all that concerns them. And we pray a special prayer for every one of the employees of Hillsborough County. We thank you for all that they do, such a great blessing to all of the people here in Hillsborough County as well. And we just thank you for a special blessing on their lives as well. In your holy name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. And I'm going to read three memos into the record real quick. One from Commissioner Cohen, "I will attend the Aviation Authority meeting this morning and unable to be at today's award ceremonies." From Commissioner Hagan, "Please be advised that I will be unable to attend the B O C C meeting scheduled for February 28th due to prior engagements out of town." And then Commissioner Kemp, "Please be advised that I am unable to attend Wednesday, February 28, 2024, B O C C Quarterly Awards due to a scheduling conflict." So if you could put those into the record. And do we need to take a roll call vote? Is that necessary? Has it in here? Okay, good. So, thank you. Today's ceremony celebrates the employees and the members of our community whose work and accomplishments help make Hillsborough County a great place to live, work, and play. Out of respect for all those being recognized today, I ask that all of our attendees please remain until the conclusion of the ceremony if you're able to do so. To begin the ceremony, I would like to recognize Chief Human Services Administrator Carl Harness. I know who's not feeling that great today, but he's still here because this is such an important day. I wish we could give out 5,200 awards, Bonnie, so we're just so thankful for the folks here that make our county run. And Carl, take it away.
Commissioner. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Much better, thank you. I would like to introduce a special guest that we have with us today, Mr. Adi Javid, who is the Vice President of Epic Engineering Group.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Good morning, all the commissioners. I'm typically used to looking this way, so bear with me. Good morning, honorable commissioners. It's my distinct pleasure to be here this morning. I'm the Vice President for Epic Engineering and Consulting Group, and I also serve on the Communications Committee for FCCMA, which stands for Florida City and County Management Association. And I'm here on their behalf presenting to you guys, celebrating 25 years of council-manager form of government. You guys have done a great job, and it's my distinct pleasure to basically recognize you for your contributions. In addition to that, I would also like to share some stats about that, in case you were wondering what council-manager form of government means. It is kind of a form of a government where you try to separate administrative oversight from the legislative duties, trying to basically separate the direct influence of politics. So what happens is that you actually end up having a professional administrator or a professional county manager who's basically taking directions and helping your elected officials with making decisions and with policymaking efforts. In addition to that, I also wanted to actually recognize the Commission for all your great work. You know, I've been in this area for almost 20 years, and I can see in the last five years, as more and more people come down here, you know, this place has changed a lot. So thank you for everything that you do for our community. And I also want to recognize County Manager Wise and her team for all the great contributions and great work you've done. With your due permission, if it's okay, I would like to run a quick video. It talks about life well-run under a professional manager like County Administrator Wise, and it also highlights some of the benefits of a council-manager form of government.
Sounds good. Go ahead.
There are things we rarely think about. Little morning rituals. A light to find our way through the dark. A bike trail just down the road. An easy commute. Having a great place to work. But all across America, there are people thinking about those details every day, crafting plans and making the decisions that transform good communities into great ones. They are our professional city and county managers. They know that characteristics like civic engagement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and solid infrastructure allow business to thrive. In fact, nearly two-thirds of Moody's AAA bond-rated cities are run by a professional manager. From exciting development projects to curbside recycling programs to the water for your shower, city and county managers are responsible for the things that help communities thrive. They make tomorrow happen, partnering with elected officials to turn big policy ideas into great achievements.
The relationship between a commissioner and a county administrator is vitally important. It provides a partnership that translates policy into action and dreams into reality. After all, every coach needs a quarterback.
The strong partnership between the Commission, the Administrator, and staff in our county has been essential in making Flagler County what it is today. These relationships give us, as elected officials, the ability to more effectively serve our community.
Using a professional manager can help keep the city out of financial trouble. They have a long-term outlook and know how to avoid kicking the can down the road. They have the knowledge and the skills on the table that elected officials usually do not have.
The elected officials are accountable to the voters, and a professional manager is accountable to the Commission. This balance of shared responsibility and responsiveness to community needs is a prescription for good government.
While most of us are busy running our lives, professional managers run the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place that we're proud to call home. Professional city, town, and county management. It's life well-run.
I would also like to share a quick fact. So back in 2009, there was a poll done, and it was recognized that only 5% of the residents or the citizens knew what is the role of the government leadership in running your local communities. So that's when, as a result of that survey, in 2015, FCCMA undertook this initiative to basically raise awareness about the council-manager form of government. And again, that's why I'm here today recognizing and celebrating Hillsborough County for 25 years of council-manager form of government. So if you could all join me in congratulating County Administrator Wise, Carl, and the other commissioners.
Yeah, and thank you so much for that. And, you know, I think that's well said, Bonnie, when they called you a quarterback. She sometimes hands me the ball, though, and I get beat up by linebackers. But I will say this, that I do believe in this form of government, and not having a county administrator like Bonnie Wise, we would be in a lot of trouble here in this county. Carl, and I think Greg Hordell's here too as well, kind of the number two. I think you could add psychologists to the end of that. Dealing with county commissioners are different personalities, are different districts, the different challenges from the urban core to the agriculture communities. You know, thank you for always being there for me and helping me, never telling me what to do, but giving me all the information that I need to make the right decision for my district, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yep.
I'm extremely grateful and honored to be able to accept this award on behalf of the Board and our county Administrator Bonnie Wise and Mr. Greg Hordell and the other members of ICMA here within the county. Just to provide a little bit of context for everyone, ICMA was founded in 1914, and the reason it was founded was to promote professional local government through management, leadership, innovation, and through ethics. As you have heard, membership within the ICMA are basically county and city managers of small towns, cities, and counties. And recently, over the last probably five or so years, that membership has been expanded to include department heads and senior managers throughout the country and in the world. ICMA supports its members through a variety of different ways. You know, you have the usual conferences and networking. You have, they do a lot of analytical data and research for us. They do technical assistance, and they're there for us when we need them, when professionals need us, when professionals need them. And they also do a lot of work overseas in terms of project managers, project management for major like infrastructural type of projects, or if a government overseas asking for them to set up something, administer it up for them, they do that too. 114 years this organization has grown to over, representing over 13,200 members in 33 countries. So indeed, there's no other organization like this in the world. And again, we applaud the Board and we applaud our Administrator for continuing to support this form of government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harness. And Ms. Wise, did you want to say anything?
Well, thank you. It is truly an honor. When I became county administrator, I just didn't want to be county administrator anywhere. It was here, this is my home, and with your guidance, I feel that we are taking this county to really some great places and for our community. So I really want to thank you for that honor and thank the team and all the employees because without the people who wake up every day wanting to serve the community, we wouldn't really get anywhere. So I want to say special thanks to them.
Yep.
And Mr. Chair, one more fact. Do be aware and put this on your calendar. October 2025, Hillsborough County in the Tampa Bay area, we will be hosting the International ICMA Conference here, right here in our backyard downtown Tampa, so.
Great. Outstanding.
Something to look forward to.
Yeah. Another opportunity to showcase Tampa. It's great. Any other commissioners? Did you have anything? Go ahead.
Yeah, sure. Good morning. It is always an honor and a privilege when our county can be recognized in the stellar service that our county Administrator Wise provide to this county. All I can say is just thank you for your leadership and thanks to our employees as well.
Very good. Anybody else? All right, so I guess we'll do a photo. So anybody else that wants to be a part of the photo, please come up.
Excuse me, could you both just state your names for the record, please? The recognition.
Sure. My name is Adi Javid and the Vice President for Epic Engineering and Consulting Group here on behalf of FCCMA.
Carl Harness, Chief Human Services Administrator.
Thank you.
All right, so the next recognition is going to be presented by Commissioner Cameron Sepeda. Commissioner?
Good morning. With Chelsea Waldeck, Business Manager of Pet Resources, please join me at the podium. Thank you. Thank you for coming today, Ms. Waldeck. Volunteers are an essential part of our fabric of our community. Hillsborough County greatly values their contributions, which enhance our programs. A perfect example is Pet Resources Volunteer Program. During the COVID-19 pandemic, the program struggled for reasons far beyond its control. Ms. Waldeck, at the time hired as the new volunteer program supervisor, viewed this challenge as an opportunity to do something special. The transformation has been amazing, and it gives me great pleasure to present the following commendation about this incredible turnaround. And it reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Chelsea Waldeck of Pet Resources for her leadership in revitalizing the department's volunteer program. Outstanding work that provides comfort to pets, instills great pride among volunteers, and resulted in a national award. As was the case with most pet shelters across the nation, the Pet Resources Volunteer Program was severely impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, presenting a difficult challenge for a shelter that takes in about 15,000 animals each year. Ms. Waldeck, then the volunteer program supervisor, and her team enthusiastically and with great focus seized the opportunity and built a bigger, better, and more technologically advanced volunteer program. Enhancements include new onboarding software for volunteers, elevating their roles, developing a monthly newsletter, recruiting and partnering with community organizations, and utilizing the Better Impact Volunteer Management System. The results are astonishing. In 2022 alone, more than 250 volunteers provided about 14,000 hours of direct care for shelter pets. The National Association of Counties recognized these amazing efforts by awarding the Pet Resource Center its Achievement Award for building back a volunteer program post-pandemic. Thanks to Ms. Waldeck's inspirational direction and innovative ideas, the new PRC volunteer program is thriving and serves as a model for the nation. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Chelsea Waldeck for championing the Pet Resource Center's volunteer program and shelter pets, and wishes her continued success executed this 28th day of February 2024. Congratulations, Ms. Waldeck. Would you like to say a few words?
Just want to set that down before I drop in. Thank you so much, and thank you, commissioners, for this amazing honor. It's a pleasure to be here today. I wasn't quite sure if we were going to make it, since my due date's in about a week, but I do appreciate everybody coming out today. When I took over the program back in 2021, there was not much, like she said. We knew we had a lot to do and a lot to grow from, but it's truly not just my honor, but an honor for all of the employees at Pet Resource Center, as well as the volunteers that work day in and day out, to try to make the lives of our pets that are needing homes as good as they possibly can. When I started, you know, we knew we needed to build a strong foundation, as Mr. Sepeda said. In 2022, we had about 14,000 volunteer hours. In 2023, we reached over 21,000 volunteer hours. So the program is growing, and I could not be more excited to watch it grow and continue to help it grow. And we would not be able to do it without the amazing work of the Hillsborough County residents that actually take such pride and care for the animals that are needing homes in our community. So I want to thank the employees as well at Pet Resource Center because this would not be possible without their support. Having a volunteer program, especially one as large as ours, takes everybody. It takes initiative from every single department at Pet Resource Center as well as the community. So thank you guys so much for this honor.
Very good. Congratulations. We can take a photo. Yeah, come on up if you're related or friends, come on up.
All right, well, it's an honor to give this next award. I love giving awards to coaches, Coach, because just me personally, growing up playing sports, you know, coaches are more than just folks that get out there around you together for practices and some games. They become second fathers to you. In a lot of cases, they become fill-in for fathers. And that's the way it was for me. I had two loving parents, but sometimes parents can't do it all, and it takes some other type of authoritative figure in your life to get you in line, to look at your report card, to make sure you're doing right, make sure you're listening to your parents and listen to your teachers. That's what Coach DeBose was to me. And Coach Dave, I think you're that to a lot of kids. And "coach" becomes a term of endearment later in life. It's not just "coach" while they're coaching you as a kid. I still call my coaches "coach" to this day. And that's what it is, a term of respect, and I know you've garnished that from all types of kids and young men, and now men and women in this community. So if you wouldn't mind, Coach Dave, coming forward? Also, Adrian Rouse, are you here? Come on forward too as well. Coach Dave DiCobo, known as Coach Dave to his athletes and as Double D to his coworkers, is a multi-talented coach who always puts team above self. He is truly the people's coach, working with children, teens, and adults of all ages and abilities during an amazing 25-year career with Parks and Recreation. Currently a staff member at Keystone Park and Recreation Center, where the motto is "everyone plays," Coach Dave also supports countywide recreation programs such as Rec 2 Fit, which impacts all department's after-school program participants. He coaches flag football, soccer, basketball, and pickleball. It doesn't matter whether the sport is outside of his comfort zone, he tackles it with gusto. That is why he is called upon by the department leaders to conduct trainings, run special events, and assist the multiple sports leagues. Every athlete he coaches, regardless of age, size, and ability, is a valuable player. Coach Dave is always looking for a teachable moment, never failing to turn a player's mistake into a positive learning experience in a pleasant way. Now, I didn't have that, Coach. My coaches would lay into me and tell me, "Come on, Owen, what are you doing, dummy?" Coach Dave-
Coach Dave wants all participants to feel valued, know they are part of a team, and to respect all participants and rules. For example, he doesn't hesitate to stop an activity and literally get down on one knee to be seen on a child's level to take advantage of a teachable moment. And he coaches outside the box. He has been known to choose the most introverted child to be the team captain, select girls for lead positions in traditionally male sports, and if a child is unable to run, assign he or she to center position in football. Coach Dave is also innovative. During one summer camp, he created an international show, Intel Day, where participants could talk about their family origins and share items. 22 countries were represented, which is amazing. It is for this incredible work and more that Positive Coaching Alliance honored Coach Dave with the Double Goal Coach Award. This award recognizes coaches for helping kids strive to become winners, teaching them life lessons, and transforming the culture of youth sports into a positive character-building experience for every participant. Coach Dave, congratulations. You are our most valuable coach. And we are fortunate that you are on our team at Hillsborough County. Coach?
Thank you so much.
All right, Coach?
I'm going next because we're not done bragging on you yet. Good morning. My name is Adrian Rouse. I'm the manager of the Recreation Services Section for Hillsborough County. And I wanted to share, not only was Dave regionally recognized, and this wasn't just a Hillsborough County honor, this was private sector, this was our Hillsborough County School Board coaches. So he's outstanding and he's right here in our own backyard and we're so proud to have him. But he also was recognized as our Recreator of the Year, which is a departmental honor. And he received a standing ovation from his coaches. And that is also pouring over here. Everybody wanted to come. We still have to run rec centers, so we had to tell them, "You can't come," but we're all very proud of him. I wanted to say thank you to our county commissioners and obviously Ms. Wise. If Ms. Wise didn't put the right people in the right place, including Mr. Hordell and Mr. Dexter Barge, we wouldn't be able to do a lot of the things we do to be innovative. They trust us. We appreciate it so much. Thank you to P C A. Positive Coaching Alliance created the platform that was able to recognize Coach Dave. And I also want to thank Positive Coaching Alliance Tampa Bay because we're able to utilize them to best fill our coaches' e-tanks, which is their emotional tank, as well as give them the training to be confident every day. And that's how they achieve this father-figure role. So we're really proud of that relationship that we have with them. So thank you, commissioners. Thank you, county administrator. Go ahead, Dave. Tell us what you want to say.
I want to introduce Coach Double D.
Good morning. I am very humbled and honored right now. I would like to first state that there are many men and women that serve our county daily in Parks and Recreation that are worthy of this award. So I want to take this opportunity to say this is a universal celebration for all of them that do go to work every day. Let's start with leadership. I would not be standing at this podium right now if it wasn't for Adrian, Pat, Rick, Dexter, Joe, Melinda, all my crew right here. Let's give it up. Y'all give it up. Chris, Charlie, Troy. So 25 years ago, I walked onto a rec site and at the end of my shift, I knew I was home. I knew this was my calling. And 25 years later, I've also inherited family. It's not just a group of coworkers. These are the type of people that if you need a tire change, they help you. If you need a dollar, if you need something, if you have a personal problem. So it allows us to be able to go and do our job daily. They equip us with what we need. They educate us. And it just makes it all around a better job for all of us. So I'm very honored and very happy to be here. And as we continue to strive for our mission statement, enhancing lives, that is the ultimate goal. So thank you very much and God bless.
Thank you, Coach, and thank you to everyone in Parks and Rec. As a matter of fact, you all get up here and let's all take a picture together. Come on, everybody. All right, well, I want to congratulate all the recipients. This will conclude our meeting today. And again, I just want to say for, I know a lot of employees are watching from Hillsborough County, we're really blessed, really fortunate. I wish we could give out 5,200 awards because we have a lot of rock stars here in this county. So on behalf of the Board, we appreciate all you all, and that concludes our meeting. Thank you.